I have a call meeting to order. Please go green. Okay, please take the roll. Reverend Childs.
Here.
Ms. Collins.
Here.
Dr. Jacobo, what is that? Ms. Jordan.
Yes.
Ms. Lous.
Here.
Mr. Michael.
Here.
Mr. Chauncey.
Here.
Ms. Shear. Here. Please graduate. Ladies and gentlemen.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, one nation under God, the indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Okay, this evening, Mr. Verge is serving as superintendent and Dr. Paleno's absent, so he'll be giving the superintendent's report. I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for matters relating to employment of particular individual or individuals in plan history of particular individuals, individuals or corporations and legal advice.
So, second.
Who goes in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we'll be going back to public session as close to 7:00 PM as possible. And so, we come to our first opportunity for public participation. I'll run through the rules very quickly, the policy of giving public participations on podium. You're limited to two minutes. We talk about issues, not personnel or students, and our board clerk will let you know when you're approaching two minutes, so you have a 30-second warning. If you are reading something that you've written and would like to leave your report, please do, and the board clerk will distribute it to all the trustees. So, when we said that, is there anyone who would like to approach the podium and speak to the board at this point? Anybody? All right, hearing no takers, we will go on to a little of minutes for November 14th. Entertained a motion.
So.
Second.
Thank you. Any corrections to minutes? Minutes of November 14th. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the minutes of November 14th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Abstentions. All right, and with that, I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Verge, who is sitting in for Dr. Paleno this evening, and he will give the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Shear. Pretty quick, easy superintendent's report this evening. We have an update on our Mahar and Second Century project. Our director of buildings and grounds, Mr. Cocker, will give us that report.
How's everybody doing?
Yeah, great.
I'm afraid of speaking such big crowd. Uh-oh, not working. Mahar's moving along very well. I'm gonna shoot you an apple because that's where we are. Fumies moving along. The big highlights of the project is that the electric is starting to get lightened up. The power boxes are all in, the generator is all attached and ready to go. We haven't fired it yet, but it's all ready to be fired. That is the elevator pit, which is now, as of today, all the flooring has been stripped off it and they're back building it tomorrow. So, they'll start to build the walls up on the outside for the exterior for the elevator starting next week. The other big news about Mahar is that we got our boilers. And we now have heat in the building, which is, all the workers are very happy about that. So, these three little boilers replace those 70-year-old boilers, and they're unbelievable. They burn like a little cannon, and they only, right now, with half the windows out of the building and just pilot them, they're running on like one and a half boilers. So, it's, they're just really efficient.
And it's toasted?
It's, well, I wouldn't call it toasted. You have to keep it a little cool so they keep moving. All the new pumps are installed, and again, as we do this and we go through these processes with our mechanical systems, we try to be as efficient as possible. All these pumps are pressure and temperature sensitive. Maybe not right on the pump, but what they do is modulate. As you need more water, they go faster, and as the water comes back warmer, they go slower. And the same with the boilers. So, it's quite an efficient system that's being put in. Most of the ductwork is in on the second floor. They've started ductwork on the first floor. All of the computer wires are back to where they need to be, back to where the rack is gonna be in Gary's office. And we're waiting for, obviously, the rack and the wall to be built, and then punch those down and make connections on both ends. And this is the floor in Dr. Paleno's office. They put the new floor in, and most of the walls are built on the second floor, and they're starting to repair floors and build out floors. This is up at the high school. This is my Second Century report. I thought they would revisit the Second Century with students and teachers in it. I'm there almost every day, and people are just really happy about their spaces. This is the agricultural program. They're gonna also do gardens on the sides of the, between East Wing and the, and Salzman. They've brought in mulch to do things outside. And they, they're growing stuff in the building, and all that stuff is real life stuff. And this is one of the makers spaces in the East Wing that has a display TV, and they're able to display the work of the children, of the students, excuse me. So, I thought that was, I was just walking through today, and I took a couple of quick pictures of that. And as far as Phase Two, we're ready to go. We're gonna go out to bid in January. They're just putting the finishing touches on it. As always, Tim Ruland from BBL is making sure all the numbers are right, and we're getting the front end all completed. We will be doing work this summer. We're planning on working in Maine mostly to get the classrooms ready so we can drain out the classes that are still in total in transit. I've had a request to redo the parking lot if we can get that in, and the sports field over by the high school. The parking lot by Sophie Penn is in pretty poor shape, and if we can get that done this summer, hopefully, and we're talking about that. Five-year plan, we've had a few little hiccups, and we're gonna go out. We still feel confident that we'll be doing construction this summer. We have not submitted yet. We said we were gonna submit by this time, but we've had to redesign some things, and we're very close.
Is it the Chippewa concerns?
Not really. Chippewa was pretty easy on us. There was some issue with Chippewa because they told us that our buildings are historic. Actually, Kennedy and Edson are built at the same time, one is historic and one is not. I don't know why that is.
And they're identical.
They were built by the same engineer, same architects. I don't know, but it is what it is. All of that was taken care of. We've had some environmental concerns at Edson. That slows us down a little bit. And then, there's just design issues with the, with the site work, with how we're doing both, and that kind of thing. So, they're trying to meet it up and get it ready, and of course, we're trying to stay, keep in budget. We will be in budget, and so it's just taking a little longer than we anticipated. Also at Mahar, I just wanna say that I have two guys that are now full-time. They're, you know, they've been working in the locker rooms, getting ready for storage. The last couple of days, they've been working in the kitchen because Ed needs to order equipment, so we're putting a new ceiling in the kitchen, we're painting all the walls, we're prepping everything so Ed can bring his, his equipment guy in to measure for all the new equipment that has for the kitchen. They cleaned up the gym, taken like all the signs and everything off the wall. They're gonna paint the gym. We've been working on the floor in the back. Probably after January, I'll have four guys there most of the time, because we just have a lot of work to do over there also. We've also been doing boardwalkers, and we're starting to knock off a few things from the boardwalkers that were major concerns, immediate concerns, and so we've been doing that. And all the heating systems are working, all the plows are working. We've already used them once. Very, very appreciative of the new backup. We used it the first day that we moved snow. We had it for about five days, and my guys are out there using it, so everything is still okay.
Questions?
I have a few questions. You're gonna be so bored in all those constructions. What are you gonna do? We'll have to build something else.
Yeah, we gotta keep just snowing. We gotta keep building.
The fire plant.
Right.
He's doing the fire plant on top of all those little stuff. He's been doing that. So, two questions. First, you know, I live over in Ripton, and the PAA and Port Union, and the fields at Graves were a real problem this year because they just flooded out, and sports are just, sports fields are just at a premium.
Right.
And so, we weren't able to use those fields. And so, I kind of PAA that in my ear, because they, I guess, were the ones that actually did the drainage on those fields to make them usable in the first place.
Right.
Decades ago.
Right.
And someone mentioned to me that the drainage goes through the old playground, which has just pulled up, I guess, because of the new playground. And so, they're wondering if something might have gotten messed up with the drainage, which is why maybe the fields flooded. I know we had a crazy amount of rain.
Right.
But they were wondering if that might have exacerbated it.
Well, I will say this. We, I, we didn't do the rip out of the playground in-house. Somebody donated their time and energy to do that. And so, we went back over, and we dug around, and we filled in the area with some soil and all that. I don't think that's the issue. We also had some drainage issues at Graves this year. The sewer line goes out to an old septic system that's in the bus turnaround, and then goes over and turns by, on the far side of the driveway. And we thought that we had a major septic leak because that area, the students were out mowing, and it was so soggy, the mower just sat down there. And we went out, and there was, there was like a sinkhole, there was water bubbling out of it. The water table is so high over there, I don't think the drainage is actually going out to daylight anymore. It's probably underwater. That whole area between us and the DOT station, you know, on the other side of that, is completely flooded. It probably has two and a half foot of water in it, and it adds up even to that.
It's just beyond that.
It, it's just that we had so much rain, and it has nowhere to go. It's the lowest part of the area, and it just collects air. And those fields are always wet, and I've kind of made jokes about it before. If you wanna, if your board just over, and you can watch the grass grow at Robert Graves.
They are always wet. But they were just wondering if maybe that was the best way.
And I will check, and if, if you could give me a name of somebody, if they can talk to me of where that drainage comes out, we'll dig up from the back, we'll make sure that it's draining.
It certainly was a wet fall, I know.
Yeah, I honestly believe it's just the water table's extremely high out there.
Okay, I'll set out. So, I'll see you in the day and evening.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And when we, you were before talking about the gym at Mahar.
Yeah.
Is that gonna get us another basketball court?
It's really a small gym. It's not a full basketball court. It's smaller than Graves Gym, and I think it's probably the smallest cafeteria that we have. So, I would say it's a half-court gym, and I don't know that we'll, we'll have, you know, sports on it. They can maybe practice there.
Is it a whole lot larger than this one?
Yeah, I would say that it's probably twice the size of this one. And then, there's a stage. There's maybe 20 feet of a stage, so it looks a little bit bigger, but the, the actual, and you have to recognize too that the baskets are off the wall. So, if it's twice this length, and then the baskets come in six or eight feet on either side, it's just not a, it's nowhere near a regulation basketball court.
Any other questions, or Mr. Paleno? Well, thank you.
Okay, so that concludes what I think is probably one of the shortest superintendent's reports.
I will say, I hope you all received the email about the revised annotated calendar. Each and every revised one moved the report on my brother's super bring-up to the December 12th meeting. So, we will be hearing about that at the December 12th meeting. And with that, are there any resolutions or trustees would like removal from the consent agenda this evening?
B thirty, I would like to pull the B thirty.
B thirty. Any others? Okay, honor to the motion. So. Thank you. Okay, any discussion about the rest of the agenda? No, not the thirty. We're just doing the.
Yes.
Is there something else on the consent agenda you want to discuss? Okay. All right, all those in favor of accepting consent agenda minus B thirty, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Okay, now, B thirty, honor to the motion.
So. Second.
Any discussion?
I would like to know the contract we have. You want a resolution to be approved, and I have a million dollars contract. I think you should come to the finest committee before we sign the contract. It was BBL. If conflict's exist, it's a million dollars, so I think it's above our.
So, are you saying? It's not a pilot. I mean, we have an attorney that will discuss the pilots. So, this didn't come out of the finance meeting? Huh? This did not come out of the finance meeting? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
No, but we.
My, that is my question, yeah. Should we present the finance committee, you know, this kind of over a million dollars? Will they serve the company?
We've not done that before. We, we haven't, no, we've never done this before. We, you know, have the capital fund to fund that, and that's part of it. I'm sorry, this rolls in.
Yeah, normally, things like this wouldn't go through the audit finance paper. Rather, the building committee is the, is the one that, so the committee to consider, you know, contracts of construction, construction management, architects and stuff, so I would say the, you know, that would be the normal route for this kind of contract being, being with BBL on the, for the purposes of construction management.
Since the five-year capital fund, so we don't have all of that. Mr. Cocker talked about the delay in the five-year capital fund, or I guess it's the, those upcoming projects. Edson, was it Edson, JFK, and Baylin?
That's correct.
That's not the entire five-year capital fund, is it?
Edson, JFK, Miller.
And Miller.
And yes, that is the extent of the five-year plan. It's been focused on those three schools.
So, that's gonna be for the next five years?
Well, the construction will probably be, what, two, two years?
Two, two-year cycle.
Yeah, there's not much left.
Two years starting in summers.
So, the five years.
Is there something to say?
It's sort of a five-year cycle. We started a couple of years ago doing the analysis for this, and so this is, that's what makes it.
We'll be starting a new five-year cycle in 2020 with, with a brand-new plan.
This is finishing up.
This is finishing up.
Past 2016, yeah.
Well, well, it's, it's, it's a living document.
Right.
So, it's based on the five, it's building, the building survey, which we, we're required by SED to do every five years. And the list, this, the last time it was done by KSQ, we had some items that were carried over, and we'll have some items carried over this time, because the entire list is worth about $84 million. So, then we go to the facilities committee, and we discuss what our priorities are, and then we decide what, how much money we have to spend, and that's what we do on the five-year plan. And we're, in 2020, we have to do another five-year plan. So, so the art, we'll, we'll engage with an architect, they'll do another five-year plan. Some of the items that are on this one will be carried over, and maybe some new items will be added.
Okay, thank you.
I think in this five-year, we're doing something like $32 million.
Sixteen. Sixteen is in budget for this, for this work.
For $30 million for this, and then we have to take care of some of the other things that came up.
Right.
And we'll reevaluate everything, and some of those things will come up a second time, right?
Right.
Yes.
I also wanna say, though, that there are things on that list that in-house takes care of as well, because if they are able to, because I think escalated costs are really having an impact. As they haven't in the past couple of years, I think it really has escalated this year. And so, the priorities have to be reexamined, the scope of the work.
That is correct.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of B thirty, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Second? Absolutely.
Thank you. I'd like to take an opportunity to present to the Board of Education and all the community two personnel appointments this evening. The first is a library media specialist who's been appointed. I'd like to introduce Christina Personius to you. Christina is filling the recent vacancy created by a resignation of our library media specialist at Chambers School and JFK, so welcome and congratulations. The second appointment is an official appointment this evening. Last year, when Kate Heidecker left on a leave, we were fortunate to have Kristen Schufelt join us, kind of pinch-hit late in the school year, a very busy time. She jumped right in and was running all over the district, covering all the important events happening. This evening, though, we're, we get the board's endorsement, and we are happy to recognize and welcome officially as our community coordinator, Kristen Schufelt.
Thank you. Okay, DeFrances, the Board of Education reports. First up is my name.
Yes, Paul, the, the, the audit and finance committee met yesterday, as a matter of fact, and we have approved the claims of the report and the terms of report by the committee. So, I would like to move tonight for a resolution.
Second round?
Did you say you will second round? Or did you have one ticket? Okay. I just couldn't, you know.
Second round.
Does he need a second?
She probably did.
That's what I thought.
You can leave it like that. All right, all those in favor, please see the five by saying aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? And I apologize. And now, next up is the Teaching and Learning Committee, and I'll try to talk to them.
Teaching and Learning Committee met on November 15th. It was a long, rich discussion, as always. We spent a lot of time talking about response to intervention, which we also call RTI. The administrator feels we have a very good plan, it's really solid, and now we really need to focus on consistent implementation across the district. We're looking to serve our lowest performing, the 10% of our lowest performing students in Tier Three, and then 10 to 20% of lowest performing on Tier Two. I'm benchmarking that against our own kids' performance so that we really can serve as many students as possible. There's a focus on literacy in RTI, and we're really working to align the RTI instruction that students are getting with students' learning style, especially now that we, teachers have so many more tools in their toolbox with all the professional development that they've been doing in literacy and a focus on literacy in this past few years. And we're also focusing on grades three and four literacy, which, as you saw from the grade four quarter report that we, the fourth quarter report that we had a few months ago is really an area of need for us. We spoke about the November professional development day. Professional development was, they were planned with a professional practice committee, which included both administrators and teachers. There were some absences, which was a little bit discouraging, and so for the first time, we sent absent teachers a letter saying that, you know, where did they get the information and talk to their colleagues, to the cabinet heads up, so that, you know, they understand how important this technical talent base are. Elementary teachers focused on the new, on the core parts, they focused on wellness, reading instruction, restorative practices, RTI, and specifically Tier Two practices. They met in grade level teams. Middle school staff worked with behavioral support team from GOSI's and spoke about culturally responsive education and social emotional learning, and reaching and teaching children. All special education and related service providers participated in IEP development, which is a district-wide focus, and on state compliance. And there's some talk about, I think that that's something that happens every year, so there's some talk about changing that up a little bit. It's important that has to happen, but maybe including some other kinds of things in the future. The focus for the high school was a book study that they've been really doing all year, which is, the book is, So You Want to Talk About Rates, so they looked on that, and what they wanted to education, and worked with team members from TACD and NYU. And then, there was a special session of K8 reading and ENL and speech staff at one school that really addressed the needs of our ENL students. And everybody felt this was a really important session. It was important to get these, these people together to talk about the needs of new students. We have over 700 new students, including some transitional students in the district, which is a lot, and so this population really is in focus, so people were really pleased with that session. They talked about the help. And this is comments you had asked about this at our last meeting. There are two levels of help right now. Explorations is really serving the top 5% of our students. It is in grades four through seven. Students qualify based on a, on their test scores on the COJAT, which is a standardized test. And students then who are on the margin of the cutoff, they look at other criteria also. We're serving about 26 students in grade four right now. Those students meet up, are gonna meet a few times a year at KHS, and participate in a book study and field trips. The middle school students are working in the library, kind of on their own, but also in groups, using a program called Ranzuuli Learning, which you continually tell me about, and I, I think I need to see it to get it. Discoveries is the second level of, or another level of help, I should say, and that's for elementary grades K through four. It's open to all students, and it's really, it's an enrichment program, and really is what it is. So, any student can join schools. There are programs that are available at different schools. It really depends on teachers' interest, or TA's interest. They step up, they say, I wanna do a discoveries program in, or gardening, or cooking, or, you know, any range of things. So, it really varies, and it's throughout the districts, what, throughout the districts and different schools, what's available. Did you have other specific questions you wanted to ask about?
No, I appreciate it. I just, when we hired that whole cadre of instructors, I was just curious, and I still think, like when you say the Ranzuuli Learning, it'd be great at some future presentation superintendent's, maybe we could have a little slideshow or, you know, just a little more, just, thank you for that. I'm excited about it.
Help was always kind of, my, my experience with help was that it was always focused on those top 5% of kids. And that remains, actually. And I think in the past, we used to have more and different kinds of programs, but that meant it just, it was those 5%, and you participated in all those programs. And then, some were better than others, I think. And, and with Discoveries, it really, it opens it up. I mean, it's not, it's after school enrichment is what it is at the secondary level, but it doesn't have anyone.
Yeah, it's important. I think we need to, we need to.
Yeah, it would, it would be nice to give them out the offerings and to have more across the district, but I think that's a challenge, you know, it's really, it's very dependent on who has time and any interest.
So, the exploration, four through seven, is that the same kid's only year? So, is that the only program the Cal program are gonna have? Do you know it's at the fourth?
Yes, it is.
They're not having anything else spring or what?
No. It's a full year program.
Yeah, it's a full year program. And kids have to qualify for it the way they would for special ed services. They have to qualify. They have to test in that. And it kind of, it, it moves away, I think, from the multiple intelligences, which I think in some ways is disappointing. But I think at the middle schools, though, they have a lot of the after-school programs, the extended day programs, that I think are more like the discovery programs for the elementary level.
I think it's easier at the middle school because they have the time set aside.
That's right.
They're actually going to carry them extended, and also there's a rate class. And so, the kids can really just take that. I mean, you know, the elementary level is really dependent on whether you're, some people come to get out at after school. So, I think that makes after school enrichment more difficult than the elementary level.
I think with the, with the, with the middle school program, there's only one entry point. Is that, is that where?
Yes, pretty much, in the fourth grade.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that's where they enter and they stay. It's not re, it's not reconstituted every.
Once they're identified, they stay throughout, and then the new fourth graders come in the next year.
For exploration.
You asked me to look into the, the Board of Regents, or NISP, reevaluating the BOCES cap, and I didn't know if Mr. Olson was gonna speak to that.
It's probably new business because the NISP has reached out and asked us for.
All right, never mind.
But I didn't hear anybody else bring up any old business, so we can stack on it to new business.
It's old business because they tried it last year.
They did try.
So, the, the BOCES capital exclusion, but please jump in, Mr. Olson, because I'm sure you understand what it would deny. But NISP is pushing again for the governor to reconsider incorporating the BOCES capital expenditures as part of the district capital exclusion. And that would affect the tax cap. Currently, the, my understanding is that the governor vetoed it because he felt that he put in this cap in place, and it was to control district taxes, and he did not want the BOCES capital exclusion to affect that. So he vetoed the, the effort to include the BOCES capital expenditures within our vote when our capital expenditures, because that would change the tax cap. Because BOCES has no other way, and Jim, you would notice, no other way other than raising their, their money, except through their, their districts. So my understanding is that we can do a few things. There's a take action letter on this, on the NISP site that we as individual board members can sign and submit. There's a BOCES board letter that the BOCES board would approve and then submit. And then there's a component district BOCES tax cap letter that is on that site that we can support and submit. So I guess what I would like to propose is that perhaps before our next meeting, we go to the NISP board, if you go to the NISP site, you can bring that up and read. The, the letter is very brief, and then there is a memorandum of support, which is similar to those memorandums we have supported in the past for different issues. And my understanding is that it would, it would only approve those capital projects that the voters had the right to approve. So it wouldn't just be anything that they wanted to do. It would still be under voter approval. And it seems reasonable to me. If the voters in the dis, component districts approve it, why shouldn't it come under the exclusion? So that's my understanding of it. If anybody wants to jump in, if I, if you're totally confused by what I said.
Olson, did you get an opportunity?
I haven't been able to research it thoroughly, but it's from experience, I don't understand that particular provision because the voters never approve BOCES capital projects and...
I think they would have to in this.
No, they can, they can.
They can.
It's not very often that they do. The last time that the Ulster BOCES had a capital project approved by the voters, I think, was when they purchased the Fort Un building.
Right. So that's a possibility, never.
I think that is a change that there are.
Right now, there's a, the Dutch BOCES is going to, is going to voters.
Yeah, there was.
And I think that was in the future today.
It was all on yesterday.
And so that's a $29 or $30 million project or something like that. So that would be approved by the voters. Ulster BOCES, when we undertake, when we talk about capital projects, we just do it on, after, an allotment of perhaps $500,000 a year. So we're undertaking a project to put new heating and ventilation in the Fort Un campus, or Fort Un CTE building, but that's gonna be spread over seven years, I think, because that's the only way that we can pay for it.
And, and all the component districts at BOCES, right?
Well, the business officials of Ulster County discussed this topic at the last meeting that we had at BOCES. And we asked BOCES to come up with, to tell us what they needed and what the timing, optimal timing would be, so that we could try to figure out what the districts could afford to do and how it might work. We haven't, to my knowledge, received that information yet from BOCES, but, you know, I think the business officials encouraged BOCES to just be frank with us about it, and we would try to figure out how, how we could deal with it within the component districts' budgets. So I think probably, I'm not the only, this official is waiting to see what, what that plan is.
Is there any way that you could review what they're proposing on the NISP site so that when we vote on it, we know what we're?
Yeah, I'd definitely do that.
That would be helpful.
When, when, I could send.
Probably the next meeting, December, July.
Is that the time?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we'll, we'll report that when we do it.
And I just had a couple of other things that were on the site, just to bring to your attention, that Kingston City Schools were on the onboard in terms of the Benedictine Health Foundation grant, a $1,000,000, which I thought was really great to see for our Do Better Today Open Schools program. And they also talked about the State Board of Regents will probably extend the moratorium on the link between the student test results and teacher and building principal evaluation. So that's still a problem.
Okay. Thank you. Any other new business? Okay, then board member announcements. Yes?
Just wanna say something. I'm gonna be available for the BOCES meeting on the 7/12, so I'll be going to the meeting.
December 5th.
December 5th, I'm sorry, December 5th.
Next Wednesday.
Okay. Let's try to know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just looking at my calendar. I'm happy with babysitting tonight, so.
Is it night on? Yes. Okay. Any other board member announcements? Great. Our next coffee and conversation will be before the next board meeting. It will be here on December 8th, Saturday morning at 9:30, right at CMI. And the two trustees will sign up for it.
I think I do. I do, but it's in the office.
Okay. Can you email?
I will, I'll email you.
Okay, thank you. Wonderful. Any other announcements? All right, your second opportunity for public participation in our life. Is there anyone who would like to address the board at this juncture? All right, I'll entertain motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, have a wonderful rest of the evening.